Proclamations.
Maybe we'll come off on this.
Yeah, what's the say?
I don't even know when Arbor Day is.
I have one of those.
I guess probably we want to do the national day.
No, that for sure.
We have no Logan who's doing the proclamations.
Hmm?
We have no Logan who's doing.
You mean, you mean all banners or you?
I mean, there's that. I ask part questions.
That's just to get through the intercession. Then they're going to have another three months.
Knowing that that part, that part of Maine is going to be that. That's me. It's good news.
Do you want these in case?
Obviously, there'll be more caveats.
And they're not nice.
Yeah, well, he thinks he's getting good. He's nine pounds. So.
He's ready to come up here and then.
Oh, is it because they're putting their kids down? And somebody goes through and there's one of their.
I didn't get that.
I know.
Well, I just. Why aren't I being such a big deal? I didn't think they can open up your pocket.
I can keep them.
Well, why don't you push forward? I turned it every one time.
He's already done it.
He don't want to be. Ian Street.
That's what I'm saying.
Here's a car coming. I'm not sure where we go now.
It's like a simple table.
On the 21st. Yeah. Yeah, thought it was the 21st.
I didn't realize he wrote a book.
Big sign if they're not to eternal.
I saw him at Bob Evans the other day. Settle it. I was out there having.
Yeah, there's been a couple of names.
Breakfast.
They put some. I don't know if they put it all.
He wrote his book. I haven't named it. I wonder if they need to go to other one of that.
He also had a lot to do with the nationally getting involved thing. It's sort of people from that boy.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because he's a Vietnam.
Yeah.
He got spit on. He knows a lot of Vietnam.
Now, hopefully, we can get better.
Do you want to make a much excuse Logan?
Yeah. Yeah, probably. I mean, it's all. So.
Okay. Well, it is 7:30. We can go ahead and get started with our meeting. It is Monday, April 21st. This is the regular TIP City City Council meeting. And we just completed a study session. If we have guests here, we have agendas at the door that you're welcome to follow along. The meeting using the agenda. There is a time at the end of the meeting for comments from citizens. So at that point, you could come forward. Otherwise, we'll go ahead with our regular meeting. So call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
President Huffman.
Here.
Mayor Rogers.
Mr. Insland.
Here.
Mr. Kessler.
Here.
Mr. Liddy.
Here.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Here.
Mr. Slagel.
Here.
Okay, and Mayor Rogers is not here tonight. Would someone like to make a motion to excuse him?
I'd like to make the motion to excuse Mayor Rogers.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the vote to excuse Mayor Rogers?
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Next, we'll have our prayer for guidance and pledge of allegiance. Pastor Jeff Seekins from Community Bible Church is here. Thank you, Pastor.
My pleasure. Let's bow. Our great God and Heavenly Father, we come before you in the name of the living Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you for the celebration that we've had just this weekend of recognizing the historical resurrection of the Lord Jesus Christ and the spiritual impact that that is in providing the death barrel resurrection that he is the legitimate Savior. And we thank you, Father, for this time that we paused before you in this meeting as has been a tradition in America through the years. And we just thank you that TIP City is honoring that. And we thank you that we can just ask for your guidance on each of these who have given themselves and this time to serve you in this way in our city. And we pray too for each of the guests here that may want to mention something. And we just commit the meeting to you now. We give you praise because Jesus lives. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Pastor Seekins. As I mentioned, we have a copy of the agenda at the door if you'd like to follow along. The council member should have received that agenda. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on tonight's agenda from council members? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes. Next, under minutes, we have minutes of the April 7th, 2025 City Council Work Session. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
Are there any changes or comments on those minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the minutes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Next, we have the minutes of the April 7th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
A second. Thank you. Are there any changes or comments on the minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the minutes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes. Next, we have the minutes of the April 14th, 2025 Special City Council Meeting. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any comments or changes to the minutes? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, please call the vote to approve the minutes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have presentations, proclamations, and awards. And since Mayor Rogers is not here, I have the honor of reading all of these. I hope I have the right glasses. Okay, so this is from the Office of the Mayor. It's a proclamation. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now celebrated throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community, and whereas the city of TIP City has been recognized as a Tree City USA community for 41 consecutive years by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting tradition, and now therefore, on behalf of Logan Rogers, Mayor of the City of TIP City, Ohio, I do hereby proclaim April 25th as Arbor Day in the city of TIP City, and I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect and nurture our trees and urban forest, not just for the beauty they provide, but for the benefits they give our residents and community. And in witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and seal on this 21st day of April 2025. Okay, so Arbor Day is recognized. We'll move on to our next proclamation, which is for the National Day of Prayer, which I believe Pastor Seekins, you were planning to accept this on behalf of our religious. So I'll go ahead and read it if you want to stay, or we could approach the podium. Your preference.
Pardon me?
Would you like to approach the podium or stay seated?
I'm five years.
Okay. Then I'll stay here. So on behalf of the Office of Mayor, we have a proclamation. Whereas the National Day of Prayer was first proclaimed by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas Abraham Lincoln signed a proclamation in 1863 asking Americans to set aside a day to confess national sins and to pray for clemency and forgiveness, and whereas in 1952, a joint resolution by Congress signed by President Truman declared an annual National Day of Prayer, and whereas in 1988, the law was amended and signed by President Reagan, permanently setting National Day of Prayer as the first Thursday of every May, and whereas the city of TIP City is home to many faiths and places of worship where citizens practice the positive influence of prayer, and whereas the theme for the 2025 National Day of Prayer is pour out to the God of hope and be filled, based on the verses found in Romans 15:13, "May the God of hope fill you with joy and peace in believing, so that you will abound in hope by the power of the Holy Spirit." Now therefore, on behalf of Logan Rogers, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the council president of TIP City, Ohio, I do hereby proclaim Thursday, May 1st, 2025 to be a National Day of Prayer in the city of TIP City, Ohio, and I urge all citizens to join me in observing this National Day of Prayer. And then there is a signature line for Mayor Rogers for the 21st day of April 2025. So we will provide it to you. That is, we'll get that completed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, moving on to legislation, we have no ordinance for second reading. We do have a resolution, which is a resolution declaring the intent to proceed under the alternative tax document format provided in Section 570581 of the Ohio Revised Code, and to refrain from the preparation of a tax budget for the fiscal year 2026, and authorizing the Finance Director of the City of TIP City to submit to the Miami County Budget Commission such documents which are necessary to said process, and to take such other actions as may be necessary incident thereto. We have Mr. Green here on behalf of Mr. Mack. Does he have something to add?
Thank you. Yeah, this resolution is something that we do every year. It essentially lets us not do the long-form budget in July, which then we would modify many times before it comes to council in September, October. I can provide much more summary information to the County Budget Commission prior to the council adopting the budget in the fall. And that's, again, it's something that we do every year, and it's, the County Budget Commission, I think, actually prefers that we do it this way instead of sending them the 100-page document in July and then again in the fall.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Would a council member like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor it. Remove for its adoption.
Could I have a second?
I'll second.
Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Would anyone from the public like to speak to this resolution? See no one. The public hearing is closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the resolution?
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Resolution 1225.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT winter contract for road salt. Mr. Green.
Thank you. This, again, is a resolution that we do annually, and what it would do is enable us to let ODOT know that, yes, we do want to participate in their bid and how much salt we're committing to. We would be committing to 600 ton, which is a little bit more than we used in past years, but this immediately past year, we used 570 tons. So we would be looking to commit to 600. We would have to buy at least 80% of that. But letting ODOT know now how much we think we're going to need lets them put the bids out in a more complete manner so that they get better bids by telling the vendors what they're going to need.
Would someone like to sponsor this resolution?
I'll sponsor it.
Second.
Second. Thank you. Are there any council comments related to the resolution? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. If anyone from the public would like to speak to this resolution, please come forward. See no one. The public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve the resolution?
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Resolution 1325.
Thank you. Next, under ordinances for first reading, we have an ordinance amending 2025 appropriations and modifying the annual operating budget as a result of this action. Mr. Green.
Thank you. This ordinance, if adopted, and then we'll come back in the next, the next meeting if sponsored, would be the first step towards the purchase of property for future economic development to control the city's growth and make sure that we can get some commercial industrial development on some property that might otherwise go residential. And this will give the city some control over that property in the, in the future. And we would ask that the, that the council does approve this ordinance to move forward. Again, we'll come back at the next meeting if sponsored. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Would a council member like to sponsor this ordinance?
I'll sponsor it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Moving on to motions, we have a motion to request or not request a public hearing for any and all liquor license renewals in the city of TIP City. And so if a council member would like to make this motion, it would be to either request or not request the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to not request the public hearings?
I'll make a motion to not request a public hearing.
Okay. And Mr. Green, I guess I should give you a minute to speak if you'd like to speak to that.
Oh, no. The only thing I would add is that I believe that we do not have any issues with the businesses that currently have liquor licenses here in the town and would not need to have a, a public hearing for the renewal of those licenses.
Okay, so we have before us a motion to not request a public hearing for any and all liquor license renewals in the city of TIP City. Would there be any council comments related to this motion? Hearing none. The public hearing is now open. Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and speak to this motion? See no one. The public hearing is now closed. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll to approve this motion to not request a public hearing?
Mr. Liddy.
Yes.
Mr. Insland.
Yes.
Mr. Kessler.
Yes.
Mrs. Pittenger.
Yes.
Mr. Slagel.
Yes.
President Huffman.
Yes. Next, under miscellaneous, I do have a statement to read. I was requested by other council members to make a statement at tonight's meeting, and it was determined that we would put this on the agenda as a miscellaneous item. So as council president and on behalf of the full council, I'm making the following statement. Counsel was made aware of an allegation which was brought to counsel as a grievance related to actions by a member of city council. It was alleged that a member of council interfered with the operations of the Fire Safety Division and Safety Services in violation of the city charter. Counsel reviewed the information in the grievance or complaint, which was the allegation, and determined that the allegation of a violation of the city charter by the council member was not substantiated or actionable. Upon finding no such violations of the charter, laws, and regulations of the city, the city shall take no further steps to review the grievance. From its perspective, the council considers this matter closed. Counsel and staff take their responsibilities as members of leadership seriously and wanted to put forth this statement to inform the public that this allegation was reviewed, and it was determined no further action would be taken, nor was it recommended counsel to take any further action. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments for items that are not on tonight's agenda. So if anyone has something, please come forward. And we just ask that you give your name and address before speaking, please.
Lisa Santucci, 426 South 3rd Street. Tonight, I am here in my role of Director of the TIP City Public Library. I was here earlier this month and mentioned the funding for public libraries in the state of Ohio, and I would like to give you an update on this situation. First, I want to let you know that due to the executive order to dismantle the Institute of Museum and Library Services, which is a federal agency that funds state libraries. Each state has their own state library and museums around the country. They also provide grants. And this did and will continue to impact our local library in TIP City, as we've been informed that further cuts will be possible. We've had several grants through that agency, and one was to pay for our summer reading program that starts on June 2nd. We recently learned that that money no longer exists. We're scrambling. We also provided a grant for the last three years called Bring Any Device that was completely grant-funded for senior citizens to help them with their phones, their iPads, their laptops, either in the library or in their home, or in a nursing home or assisted living. We went there and assisted them with their technology needs. This service was discontinued when that executive order was signed and that person lost their job. We no longer provide that service. Therefore, I just wanted to inform you that federal funding did affect us here locally. Next, on the state-level funding, since the last time I was here, the House of Representatives did amend HB 96, which, as you know, is the state budget. The first round of the budget slashed funding for all public libraries, which is the Public Library Fund, by $100.8 million. They have now put back $10 million, so the cuts at this time after the amendment is now $90.8 million. Our funding in TIP City, we rely on 70% from that fund to exist. 20%, 20-plus or so, is from our local levy, which we've only had for 15 years. We have a five-year renewal, and we've only had it for 15 years. It is very small. It is a .75 mil. The rest come in from local, from donations. This reduction in funding will devastate and close many libraries throughout the state of Ohio. Governor Dewine had in his budget for the funding model to remain the same. As the budget begins to move through Senate as they come back from Easter break, we've asked our patrons to speak up, inform their senator and representative what having a public library in this town means to them. The one last thing I should share, if you did not know this, the state of Ohio is to be considered the apex of libraries in this country and throughout the world, if you didn't know that. The online catalog was invented in Columbus in 1972, and many more innovative services were created in the state of Ohio. Ohio is the third highest state to use electronic books. California, New York, Ohio, because of the expanded services that we have in this state. I'm not from Ohio, but I studied Ohio while I was in grad school, and it was often said that no one did it like Ohio. I recently had to do the math. I've realized I've worked in libraries for over 35 years, and watching them disintegrate all over our country, it's been surreal. I hope that Ohio and its amazing history will support and not fail. I'm going to continue to come here and let you know what's going on before that budget is signed, so that in order, if there are funding cuts, this will be no surprise to you when I come back and say in two years, we will not have a public library in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If we could have your name and address before you speak, please.
Be glad to. My name is Jeff Morford, 6570 East Walnut Street, TIP City, Ohio, but I don't live in TIP City. I'm one of those that lives in Bethel Townships.
Okay.
Just so I make that clear to you, so I'm not a TIP City resident.
Okay, thank you.
I have lived in Bethel Township for over 50 years. I would like to tell you some of my experiences living in Bethel Township, specifically my experience over many years being exposed to annexations and developments from New Carlyle, Clark County, and Huber Heights, Montgomery County. Two recent separate developments, both involving annexations, both across county lines, both across township lines, both across school district lines, both requiring annexations, both developments outside our zoning regulations, both not promoted or supported by Bethel residents, both not promoted or supported by three elected township trustees, both not supported or promoted by our three elected Miami County Commissioners. Quite the opposite. Our residents, our trustees, our county commissioners opposed them as best they could. Sadly, 20 years ago, the lawmakers in Columbus passed annexation laws slash procedures that did not address the full scope of annexation, who would be involved, who would have the right to decide. In my opinion, the annexation laws left room for abuse by developers and cities to circumvent the direction townships across the state wanted to go or not go. North of Huber Heights, there has been three major annexations over the last 20 years. The most recent includes 300 acres and the building of 1,400 high-density housing, houses. Land in question was governed by Bethel Township Trustees, protected by Bethel Fire, EMS Services, and the Miami County Sheriff's Department. Water and sewage was available through Miami County Sanitary Engineering. The only thing the developer wanted was the high-density zoning available through Huber Heights not available or desired in Bethel Township. So the developer, landowner, city lined up together to force their will on a small rural community, a community by current annexation law unable to defend itself, a prime example of being bullied. 20 years ago, the lawmakers tied the hands of all townships, put a gag in our mouth, took away our voice, took away the citizens' ability to vote on our local future. We became defenseless, unable to protect our community from developers and cities imposing their will on a small township, a small community, and our local Bethel School. Today, well over half of the Bethel School's student population comes from past annexation developments, and with the latest round of annexations and developments, the overwhelming majority of Bethel's students will be Huber Heights residents. Leading up to the latest Huber Heights annexation development, well over 100 Bethel residents, Bethel schoolteachers, Bethel students, Huber Heights residents attended and spoke against the annexation and development at Huber Heights City Council meetings. But in the end, the Huber Heights City Council, along with the mayor, chose to disregard these facts, chose to find money more important than the wishes of the people, and voted yes to the annexation development. These Huber Heights City Council members voted as representatives of their citizens. But these Huber Heights City Council members also voted by default as Bethel Township residents, but I don't remember their names on any ballot I voted on. We did not elect them to represent us. We cannot vote them out of office. They have no allegiance to Bethel Township. They have no responsibility to Bethel Township, and they have no accountability to Bethel Township. A group of Huber Heights residents formed a PAC and attempted to use a referendum petition to put the issue on the ballot, allowing the citizens of Huber Heights to make an individual choice. Once again, the citizens of Bethel Township could not sign the petition. But because using a referendum is very difficult, the Huber Heights citizens were hard-pressed to get things in order, and there were only four days available to circulate the petition. This is important. In four short days, the small group collected over 1,200 signatures from Huber Heights citizens. This was not enough to cover the necessary 15% to move forward. Please realize this effort spoke volumes as to what the local citizens wanted, but their elected representatives ignored these numbers. Over the last three years, I have individually spoken to a few hundred New Carlyle and Huber Heights residents about annexation and developments. The conversation would always start with why they were for or against annexation and development. Actually, there were two men that came up to me rather aggressively, questioning what's wrong with developments. I would then ask them if they knew how annexation process works. A few were confident they knew, but they did not. When I explained that the annexation process gave ultimate authority to the city council receiving the annexation request and the citizens living in the township where the land is located and governed for 100 years. and governed for hundreds of years had no voice, had no vote. After explaining these facts to a person with a frown on their face, they would reply one of three ways. That's not right. That can't be right. Are you sure? Like I was misinformed, or I was lying to them? There's an old saying from the Boston Tea Party, "No taxation without representation." Now I call no annexation without representation. In the end, the people who stood in line to make the money, the landowner, the developer, the city, stood fast and imposed their will on a disadvantaged community, a community denied democratic rights, with no ability to vote yes or no. I ask you, is this what America has accepted as freedom, morality, ethics, and democracy? Our newly-elected District Representative Jonathan Newman and Representative Adam Byrd from District 63, located southeast of Cincinnati, have introduced legislation bill, House Bill 113, aiming to reform Ohio's annexation laws. I don't believe it goes far enough, but if passed, it would give the county commissioners a voice, and school district problems would be addressed. The reason I don't believe this referendum goes far enough? Annexation in large developments, commercial or residential, are not an everyday occurrence. I believe elected officials, time in office is often short-lived, but the citizens are always there. When it comes to decisions of such magnitude, projects that will forever change the complexion of a community, these decisions should be put on the ballot in all affected communities so the residents can say yes or no. So if the project is a success, the community can enjoy the benefits and take credit, or if the project is a failure, the citizens have to take responsibility and accept the consequences. They voted for or against it. It's called democracy. It's called freedom. I realize your situation and the issue with Huber Heights is not exactly the same, but there is a common denominator. The developer proposing a high-density housing development in your city is the same developer who has been involved with the unwanted annexation developments that have plagued our township for years. I ask you to consider if this developer, who has disregarded the Bethel community's wishes to maintain and support a rural way of life, is he the one you want to trust with your community's future? Citizens living in urban communities have a voice when it comes to their future. Citizens living in a rural community should also have a voice. It's called freedom, civil liberties, and democracy. You can be for or against annexations and developments, but everyone, no matter where their place of residence, should have a choice, have a vote, yes or no. Majority rules. If a citizen or community loses their right to choose or vote for reasons of convenience, profit, tax revenues, the time will come when many will lose these rights if we are not careful. You are fortunate that your community has not lost your right to decide and vote on your future. Please make sure your citizens get what they want. If your citizens want to expand and develop, please find a developer willing to supply the type of growth that your city wants, not what the developer wants to supply. Please don't be impatient. These decisions are permanent. There is no do-over button. I suggest you get strong input from your citizens. Please circulate a survey. It's your community. Keep it that way. I truly appreciate that you allowed me to speak at length. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward and speak? See no one. Now we'll move on to comments of the council members and manager, Mr. Slagel.
None tonight.
Mrs. Pittinger?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Insland?
Nothing for me, Fisher.
Mr. Liddy?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to pass on my condolences to the follower of the Pope, who passed away just recently. He was a great promoter of peace and passing kindness on to fellow citizens. He promoted wellness to people. I think his loss is going to be felt worldwide. And on that note, I would like to give and repeat, practice and rack the kindness, open a door, smile at somebody, just make their day a little bit better so it'll make our place a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. I don't have anything tonight, Mr. Green.
I don't have anything either. Thank you.
So with that, we're ready for adjournment. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you call the vote to adjourn the meeting?
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Slagel?
Yes.
Mrs. Pittinger?
Yes.
Mr. Liddy?
Yes.
Mr. Insland?
Yes.
President Huffman?
Yes. We're adjourned.